Welcome. The July 9, 2013 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Mr. Mihawk?
Here.
Mr. Sparassia, recorded absent. Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the July 9, 2013 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, known as Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and please address your questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Channel 96 in Mentor, Channel 22 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. And if you would, please place your mobile telephones on silent mode for the meeting. Thank you. First order of business is approval of the June 10 -- I'm sorry, June 11, 2013 regular meeting, and June 26, 2013 special meeting.
Second.
Comments?
Just note that we discovered two typographical errors, both involving an individual's name, one on page 403, one on page 407. We took the liberty of making those corrections in the minutes that were distributed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes. Thank you. Next order is hearing of the public on any agenda item. Seeing no takers, we'll move on to the superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Item 5A1. 5A2 is recommended for approval with the following correction: It's an eighth-grade class field trip and not a sixth-grade class.
Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Wade, did you come up too? Mr. President, members of the board, we would like to recognize one of our teachers who has been selected at a state level -- as a state-level finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, Mrs. Amy Rodeger. This prestigious award recognizes Amy's outstanding contributions as a teacher of science in Ohio. Amy will be invited to attend a regular monthly meeting at the Ohio State Board of Education. At that meeting, she will be congratulated publicly by the board and receive a board resolution saluting her accomplishment. The National Selection Committee and the White House make the final decision on the state awardee and the national awardee in May or June of next year, so Amy may possibly look forward to a trip next spring to Washington, DC.
Do we get to go with you to the?
I'm allowed to take some.
Okay, great. All right. But honestly, we have a lot of teachers in our system, as everyone -- most people in this room know, that go above and beyond, and Amy is certainly one of those teachers. And if we could, we'd probably be recognizing her monthly, and it's been about three months in a row now, I think. You or your students, I think. So, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication, and congratulations.
Thank you.
They say it takes a village to raise a child, and it took a district to get me to this position in this award process, so I'd just like to take a couple minutes to say thank you to a few people. It was Margaret Watson who nominated me, and I never would've gone for this without Margaret's support, so thanks, Margaret, for your vote of confidence. When I received the email that I had been nominated for this award, I really was totally without words. So then I had to videotape a class and write 12 pages and submit 10 pages of supplementary materials. It was really a big undertaking. My 13-14 class gave me their very best work on the day that I videotaped them. My mom actually came and videotaped me, which was great. And then I had to have three letters of recommendation, so I wanted to thank those people, too. Greg and Barbara Super are mentor parents, and they wrote, from a parent's perspective, and included words from their son Matt, who I taught and also coached for four years on the speech and debate team. And my colleague, Tracy Coleman, wrote about me from a peer perspective, and she actually sent one of my former students around to other former students to get quotes about me, so that she could include a student perspective in her letter. And my most recent evaluations were done by Lee Munoz and Larry Luciano, so together they wrote the letter from the administrative perspective, and these letters were so sparkling. Mr. Miller just said, "We have so many amazing teachers in the district," and that's really true, and I'm lucky to teach in a place where so many people push you to do your very best work every single day. And if all of them could read a letter like this at some point in their career, it really -- it's humbling, so I really appreciate that. And then lastly, the staff, and especially the administration at Mentor High, has given me so much support to try things and do things, and I really am so grateful to work in such a great place, so thank you so much.
Mr. President, members of the board, according to board policy and state law, a bullying report is required to be reported semi-annually. Mr. Porter's going to present that this evening, and it'll also be posted on our website.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson. This evening I will briefly review the information from the second semester's bullying report for the district. As a reminder, bullying is defined as any intentional written, graphic, verbal, or physical act that a student has exhibited toward another particular student more than once, and the behavior both, A, causes mental or physical harm to the other student, and B, is sufficiently severe, persistent, or pervasive that it creates an intimidating, threatening, or abusive educational environment for another student. During this semester -- this past semester, we had 18 total events that rose to the level of bullying, which compares to 22 during the second semester a year ago across the various levels. In reviewing the events from this past winter and spring, we can characterize several of them as including inappropriate physical contact, or insults, or inappropriate gestures. This time, more than half of the instances did include cyberbullying and/or social media, which we are becoming more and more aware of each year. Buses and bus stops were again locations for four of the incidents. Since tracking this data consistently now for several years, we can definitely recognize measurable progress in our efforts, but we cannot stop learning about how to prevent bullying and how to respond to it. We recognize it as more prevalent in areas that are traditionally harder to supervise. Besides tracking the shifting trends, the more common cyberbullying, we will continue our initiatives to create, model, and reward more compassionate and positive behaviors throughout the schools. So that concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you. Each year, a resolution is recommended to adopt a Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan. We've called them blizzard bags, which allow us to post classes online in the event we have more than five calamity days next year. I'm recommending approval of the resolution adopting this once again for a Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of the parent-student handbooks for the nine elementary schools, three middle schools, and the high school.
Second.
Questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, Policy 2.04 is being revised due to House Bill 153, which amends teacher evaluation requirements, and Senate Bill 316 requiring the evaluation procedures apply to assistant principals as well as principals, and also incorporates the new deadlines of non-renewal for administration. Policy 7.05 is being updated to include the law's new requirement that districts assess the reading skills of each student enrolled in kindergarten to third grade by September 30. That students identified as reading below grade level receive regular diagnostic assessment. As a side note, I will tell you that we already do a really good job of doing this now, our staff does, along with our principals. This is just more legal language than anything else. In addition, the changes in the law require that each teacher assigned to a student on a reading improvement and monitoring plan be retained by the third-grade reading guarantee if they don't meet certain criteria. The law further requires districts to report these results to the Ohio Department of Education if they believe they will not have enough qualified teachers assigned to such students. Again, more of a legal issue in wording than practice here at Mentor. And finally, districts are required to devise a plan to administer applicable diagnostic assessments within 30 days to transfer students entering the district if they have not yet received such assessments. For example, students moving in from out-of-state or from a perigual or voucher school. This is the first reading for these policies, so no votes necessary, but I did want to let you know what it was about.
Good, thank you.
Moving on, Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to certified personnel, and Agenda Items C2 through C4 all related to human resource matters.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. At this time, it is our privilege to introduce our newest staff members to Mentor Schools. Every year, we choose the best of the best, and this year is no exception. We feel very confident that they will be an outstanding group of teachers and staff members, and we're excited that they're now part of the family. Mr. Phoe and Mrs. Burnett will join me to make the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Wilson, and board members. First, we'd like to introduce Brian Kogleski. Brian, if you'd stand up. Come on up here, Brian. Brian graduated from the College of the Holy Cross in Worcester, Massachusetts, with a BA in English in 2003, and then from John Carroll University in 2008 with a master's degree in education. After completing his student teaching experience at St. Ignatius High School during the 2007-2008 school year, Brian took on a long-term assignment in August of 2008 in the English department for the North Royalton City Schools. Brian enjoys cooking, gardening, and coaching volleyball. We welcome Brian as the new English teacher at Ridge Middle School, working with Ms. Kinsey. Ms. Kinsey, you here?
Yep.
Do you have anybody you'd like to introduce?
My parents, Jim and Pat, are sitting over there where I was. I apologize if you smelled anything bad coming into here, but I did have volleyball open gym and then a parents' meeting tonight where I went and I spoke to all the parents, so I'm pretty much out of words at this point here right now, but I am really excited for the opportunity to be here. Mentor's always been a good school district, and if one more person tells me that they're looking forward to Mentor being relevant again in volleyball, my blood's going to boil over. So, we are already relevant, and we're going to continue the tradition of Mentor in terms of all of the great sports programs here and all of the great academic programs here, especially the speech team. As I well know from my time being a Lincoln Douglas competitor and judge, Mentor always filled the stands with lots and lots of people and won every trophy ever, so I'm looking forward to hopefully volunteering and helping out in that regard, too. So, thank you very much.
Kimberly Driscoll is unable to be with us this evening. Kimberly received her bachelor's degree in instrumental music education from Miami University and Oxford in 2008 and is currently working on her master's degree in music education from Ohio State University. During the 2007-2008 school year, Kimberly competed her student teaching experience in the Kings Mills Public School District in Kings Mills, Ohio, near Cincinnati. For the 2008-2009 school year, Kimberly secured a position as orchestra director with Bryan City Schools, and then in August of 2009, she moved to Middletown City Schools as an orchestra director for grades six through 12. We welcome Kimberly to Mentor Schools as she takes on this new role as the instrumental music teacher.
Emily, will you stand up, please? When Emily was interviewed -- yes, come up. When Emily was interviewed, her last name was Gray. Her new last name is Letessa. Emily got married in the meantime, so congratulations to Emily. Emily received her bachelor's degree in psychology from Ohio University in 2000. She went to earn her master's in education in school psychology in 2012 from John Carroll University and anticipates completing her educational specialist degree in August of 2013, also at John Carroll. Emily completed her school psychology internship during the 2012-2013 school year with the Orange City School District. We welcome Emily as the new school psychologist at Garfield and Hopkins Elementary. Emily has three children, a set of twins, just like Ms. Burnett, Aiden, Elizabeth, and Caleb. Welcome, Emily.
I am so excited to start at Mentor Schools. I have grown up in the area, and Mentor has always been a great school district, and I'm very excited to become a part of this team, so thank you very much.
Bill Kovak, can you come up front, please? Bill earned his Bachelor of Science in Mathematics in 2002 from the University of Toledo and completed the requirements for certification and education from Cleveland State University in 2007. He completed his teaching experience at both Warrensville Heights High School and Brush High School during the 2006-2007 school year. During the summer of 2007, Bill taught summer school mathematics and has since worked in several districts in the area in long-term substitute positions. During the 2012-2013 school year, Bill was employed by Mentor Schools as a building substitute at Mentor High School. Bill enjoys traveling with his family, especially with his two kids, Michael and Elizabeth, who are in attendance this evening, and we welcome Bill as the new math teacher at Mentor High School.
I'm joined today by my wonderful wife, Katie, my son and daughter, Mike and Liz, my parents, Bill and Patty Kovak, and my mother-in-law, Rita Flowers. I want to start off by thanking Mr. Miller, the board, and Mr. Wade for this opportunity. I am very excited to be here. It's almost been a dream to work in Mentor Schools, and I look forward to adding to the already stellar and excellent reputation here in Mentor Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Sarah received her Bachelor of Science in Education at Ashland University in 2010 and then completed requirements for a generalist endorsement on her license in 2012. Her student teaching experience was done at Crestview Middle School in Crestview, Ohio, in teaching seventh-grade math and language arts. Sarah has been -- Mentor has been very fortunate, especially Memorial, to have Sarah all year as our building substitute, never missed a day and never missed a beat with helping wherever it was needed. She will be a great asset at Hopkins next year as a fifth-grade teacher. Sarah, in her spare time, loves skiing at all the different ski resorts in the area. We welcome you to Mentor Schools.
I'm joined here today by my parents, Linda and Gary, in the middle there, and I'd just like to thank the board and everyone for having me here today. It's been great to meet all of you, and I'd like to thank all the staff and administration in the Mentor Schools for helping me get to where I am today. I'm so excited to be starting at Hopkins and join the teaching team there where I went to elementary school, so thank you so much.
Amy Land. Amy graduated from Cleveland State University in 2009 with a bachelor's degree in early childhood education. She completed her student teaching experience at both Rice Elementary School and the Cleveland School of the Arts during the 2008-2009 school year. Amy has been a valued Mentor School substitute teacher since January of 2010, completing many long-term assignments in several buildings. We welcome Amy as a full-time Mentor School teacher, as a fourth-grade teacher at Lake Elementary School. And the one thing I will say about Amy and Sarah, Mike Lynch, when he hires somebody, he really goes the extra mile, so to speak. Amy and Sarah were a part of our finalists, who ended up having to come in during the summer, and Mike put together a group of kids, fourth graders, and had them demonstration teach a lesson. I learned a lot myself during those lessons, and both Sarah and Amy had outstanding lessons that we all rated extremely high. Amy, unbeknownst to everybody, likes to play fantasy football, so the superintendent may want to include her in fantasy football league next year. Congratulations, Amy, Emily, and welcome.
Thank you for having me here today. Growing up in Mentor, this has been my dream, and having my student teaching here and my long terms here has just been a goal of mine, so I'm very excited and I feel very privileged to be a part of the Mentor School, so thank you for having me and thank you for your warm welcome.
I hope you'll be late. I'll buy a burger. Come on down. Sean graduated in May of 2013 from Ohio University with a Bachelor of Science degree in physical science education with a minor in chemistry. His student teaching experience was completed at Warren Elementary School in Marietta, Ohio, teaching seventh and eighth grade science. We welcome Sean as the Career Tech Education Physics Teacher at Lakeland Community College. He also likes to fish in Canada.
I would like to start off saying that I am much more interesting than fishing in Canada. I was kind of put on the spot when I walked in. He's like, "What's that interesting fact about you?" And it's the last thing I did, so. But my family couldn't make it here today, but I would like to thank them because there's no way I would have made it this far without them, so would also like to thank Mr. Wade for giving me the opportunity and, you know, banking on a young guy like me. I try to disguise that with this goatee that I'm currently growing, but, you know, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I'm not going to let you down. Thanks a lot.
Sarah graduated from John Carroll University with a bachelor's degree in early childhood education in 2002 and then earned her master's degree in special education from Cleveland State University in 2006. Sarah secured a position with the Cleveland School District as a special education teacher and a seventh-grade reading teacher. In October of 2004, she took a long-term substitute position with the Euclid City Schools and began a full-time position in April of 2006 as an intervention specialist. Sarah enjoys traveling overseas, especially to Spain and Italy, and we welcome Sarah as a new fifth-grade teacher at Orchard Hollow Elementary School. Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank the board, Mr. Miller, and, most importantly, Mrs. Trunk for giving me this -- my new principal, for giving me this opportunity to be a part of the Mentor Schools. I live within Mentor. My children, they're too young right now, they're two and four, will be attending the Mentor Schools, and I'm just thrilled to be on both ends of it, as a teacher and then as a parent, to put my child through these schools as well. Thank you.
Lori graduated from Cleveland State University with a Bachelor of Arts in Education in 1996, then earned her master's degree, majoring in curriculum and instruction, in 2001. In August of 1996, Lori secured a position with the Euclid City Schools, teaching in an inclusion classroom of fifth and sixth-grade students. In 2005, Lori made the decision to stay home with her preschool-aged children for a few years, then returned to teaching in 2012 as a substitute teacher in the Willoughby Eastlake School District. We welcome Lori to Mentor Schools as the new fourth-grade teacher at Garfield Elementary. Lori likes to spend her summers at Mentor Harbor sailing. Congratulations, Lori.
I brought with me my husband, Doug, who's over there. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm so excited to be back in the classroom and working at Garfield, and I want to thank Mrs. Price, my principal, who has welcomed me so warmly that I already feel like I'm a part of this team, and I'm very excited for the school year to begin, so thank you.
Christina graduated from Ohio State University with a degree in psychology and a minor in business in 2008 and then earned both her master's degree in educational psychology and her educational specialist degree from Chapman University in California in 2012. Christina completed her school psychology internship at Irvin Unified School District in Irvin, California, in 2012. She worked in a long-term substitute position in California until April of 2013, at which time her husband was transferred to Ohio. An interesting fact about Christina is that she loves to bake, especially cupcakes, so we will welcome them at any time, just to let you know, and Christina will be joining the high school staff at Mentor High School. And Christina will be joining the high school staff at Mentor High School as the school psychologist. Welcome.
Can I just say, this is a completely surreal moment. I can't believe that I'm standing here being welcomed by all of you. Thank you, Margaret Watson, for offering me this position and having the faith in me to carry out Mentor Excellence. Thank you to the board. I will not let you down, and I'm looking forward to carrying on Cardinal pride. And most importantly, I'd like to thank my family. My sister is sitting over there in the coral shirt. She's been my cornerstone, my everything, in this transition back to Ohio from California. And my husband could not be here today, but I know that he is exceptionally proud and wishes this transition to continue to be the amazing opportunity that it has been. So, thank you very much.
After attending the University of Louisville -- or is it Lewisville?
Louisville.
Oh, Louisville. Also Cardinals. And Columbus State College. Jordan graduated from Ohio State University with a bachelor's degree in technical education and training in December of 2012. He completed his student teaching experience at both Hilliard Bradley High School and Hilliard Davidson, both in Hilliard, Ohio. Jordan has been a substitute teacher since February 2013 for the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio, and begins his full-time teaching career with the Mentor Public Schools as the new business administration and management teacher in the Career Technical Education Department at Mentor High School. We welcome Jordan to the Mentor Schools, and Jordan's fact is, he just came back from Colorado where he liked to ski.
I would just first like to thank the board, Matt Miller and Mr. Wade for giving me the opportunity to be here. I'm really happy that I'm in such a great school district. I've been here for about four to five weeks now coaching football. I've had the opportunity of meeting a lot of great people. I'm just really excited to be here, and thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Margaret earned her Bachelor of Science degree majoring in biochemistry and her Master of Science degree majoring in chemistry at the University of Illinois at Urbanea Champagne in 1989 and 1996 respectively. Sorry. In 2010, she earned her Master of Education degree from John Carroll University and completed her student teaching experience at Mentor High School during the 2009-2010 school year. In August of 2010, she began her teaching career at Willoughby Eastlake as a chemistry teacher. Prior to Margaret, she actually was a water treatment engineer in her prior life, but we welcome her to Mentor Schools as the new physical science chemistry teacher at Mentor High School. Congratulations.
I was really hoping you wouldn't say the year I graduated, but you did. Cat's out of the bag. Thank you to Mr. Wade, Mr. Miller, the board. I'm really looking forward to coming back to Mentor. Amy, joining your department, I'm so excited and thrilled. I didn't know you were receiving that honor, so that's exciting. Eager to get started, but unfortunately, my husband couldn't be here with my two darling children. I will say that they are relieved I did not get the position in Riverside Schools. They did not want me coming to their school. But the other thing I should note is, I am from Illinois, I'm from Chicago, so I'm going to apologize in advance to being a Cubs fan and a Bears fan, but hopefully that's not a deal breaker.
Sorry, Jordan, I almost skipped you. Jordan graduated from Balden Wallace College with a Bachelor of Arts degree in health and physical education in 2010. He completed his student teaching experience at both James A. Garfield School in Cleveland and Mid Park High School in Middleburg Heights. In addition to being a valued substitute teacher for the past two years for the district, I think he's filled in for every PE health position there has been at all levels. Jordan has been an assistant football coach for Mentor High School since the 2011-2012 football season. An interesting fact about Jordan is he grew up on a 90-acre house farm with his family. We welcome Jordan full-time to Mentor Schools as the new health and PE teacher at Mentor High School. Congratulations.
Thank you. And I want you to know that we actually raised horses, not houses. I can tease Kathy because I got to work for so long, and I just want to say that before coming to Mentor, you know, with my background as an athlete and as a coach and a farmer, I thought I knew what it was to work hard. And then I kind of got the opportunity to work with so many great principals and so many great administrators, so many great teachers in this district, and, you know, I've learned a lot about hard work since then. So, I just want to thank you, board, for so much for this opportunity. I'm extremely grateful, and I can't wait to spend the next 35 years of my life here in Mentor. So, thank you guys so much.
Matthew Yoke, who I'll introduce next, was unable to be here tonight, but he is going to be our high school orchestra director. Matt graduated from Miami University in Oxford, Ohio, with a bachelor's degree in music education in 2004 after completing his student teaching experience in the Sycamore City School District in Cincinnati, Ohio. Oh, I say that very slowly. In 2006, Matt received his master's degree majoring in string pedagogy from Ohio State University. His past teaching experience has included a position as assistant orchestra director for the Newark City School District, an assistant to the director at the Wexner Center for the Arts in Columbus, and most recently, as the choir and general music teacher for the Willoughby Eastlake School District. Matt has also participated in the Mentor Schools' summer music programs for several years. We welcome Matt to Mentor Schools as the new orchestra and music teacher at Mentor High School. Little-known fact, this was probably one of the most unusual set of interviews that I've been involved in. I think we did an outstanding job in having our final four come to the high school, play their instrument in front of us, the interview panel, and then conduct our actual high school orchestra. It was just, it was very enjoyable because I got to relax and see some great conducting and a great orchestra play. So, welcome to Matthew Yoke to the Mentor Schools. Thank you.
Alyssa graduated from Bowling Green State University in December of 2012 with a Bachelor of Science degree in math education. During her years at Bowling Green, she played on the varsity women's soccer team and was captain of the team in 2011. She completed her student teaching experience at Bowling Green High School during the 2011-2012 school year. Her past experiences include coaching soccer with the Mentor Soccer Club and working as a counselor soccer coach at both the University of Notre Dame and South Bend, Indiana, and at Bowling Green State University. An interesting fact, when I asked Alyssa, was the most heartfelt I think I've ever heard. Her mom is her best friend and her idol, and she told me, "And that's no joke." We welcome Alyssa to Mentor Schools as the new math teacher to Mentor High School. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. So, I'd like to introduce my mom, Marlene. She's over there, and like I said, she's my rock. Although my brother can't be here, those two have stood in my corner this entire time, so without them, I couldn't be here. So, thank you very much. I also want to thank the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wade for giving me this opportunity because I am more than honored and completely humbled to have this opportunity to give back to the community that gave to me so much. So, I won't let you down. I'll give you my 100% efforts, and I promise I won't fail. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
I just want to take just a quick second if the board will indulge me. We get to welcome a lot of new faces and new employees tonight, and we are thrilled for that. We also get the chance to say goodbye to somebody. This will be their last board meeting. Mr. John Fell, back here, who's been our HR director this one year, and that was sort of the arrangement when he came onboard in July. And, you know, when you come in and it was already arranged that John was going to be here for a year, and when you come into a place for a year, you know, I've seen other places where they're just sort of manning the ship, so to speak, and making sure that the sailing is smooth. Well, John made sure that the sailing was smooth, but he also, from day one, rolled his sleeves up and dug right into the district, and I think really made this building and our district a better place. So, John, I want to thank you for your years of service, your year of service.
13 months.
How long?
13 months.
13 months. So, and just for your professionalism and really just, he's been a great resource for myself with his vast years of experience in education. And one of the things that I think has said a lot around here, and I think applies to you too, is even though you spent many, many moons in Euclid, once a Cardinal, always a Cardinal. So, remember that. So, thanks, John.
Do you want to say anything?
No, thanks. I will say I appreciated this district, and it was a great way to end a career. Your superintendent will hopefully be here for 25, 30 years. He's building a great team, and I think you're going to be very proud of the results he's able to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my part.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Moving on to the Board of Education report and recommendations under business, presentation of the Mentor Education Scholarships.
Before I get to announce the Mentor Board of Education scholarship winners, I find it amazing that we've got teachers coming back, not only to Mentor, but they're going to be teaching in schools they went to. That just blows me away, and there's going to be lots of stories in those buildings. That ought to be fun. The teachers lounge will never be the same again. Onto Mentor Board Scholarship. Each year, we pick a couple of students to award a scholarship. It's not much money, it's $500, but obviously, every little bit hurts when you go off to school. I get the honor of looking at all these applications that we get every year, and I spend hours with them because it just blows me away with what these kids are doing in their high school career and the recommendation letters that they get and what people have to say. And it's really difficult, it becomes really hard to narrow it down to just three, but what I can say is that these students are learning in high school what's going to make them very successful, and they've learned that to make good use of their time and with all the things they do, work, extracurriculars, and the grades are there, they should have no problem in college. There's three recipients. I know one that I talked to, Sarah Bork, could not make it this evening. She's at Ohio State at her, not at orientation, so she can't make it. I'm not sure if our other two are here, Emily or Catherine?
Emily.
Emily. Okay, well, I can talk about Emily. Emily Hathaway. I was hoping this was Emily because Emily's planning to go to Bowling Green, maybe Alyssa can help her, and wants to go into teaching. And all I can think of is maybe four years from now, you'll be from one part of the room to the other. But again, Emily's going into teaching at Bowling Green. Sarah Bork's going into engineering at Ohio State, and Catherine Ferranti is also going to Ohio State. She plans to major something in the medical field. She's not sure of the major, but it's going to be in medicine. One of the interesting things that came from this when I was trying to reach the students made me feel good about what we're doing in the district, the district as a whole, parents, teachers. I got into a discussion with one of the parents about their daughter going off to school and the tests they make you take when you go to orientation because they want to see how many of the kids can they put in a remedial math or English class. And we talked about that, and you almost never hear that from Mentor students. And his daughter, he said that she not only, I think it might have been Sarah, I'm not sure, but it was that she exempted out of the first two calculus courses at Ohio State. And that shows you the kind of teaching that's being done in the district, so they're not having to take remedial courses, they're actually exempting out. And I had that experience myself. My son graduated from Mentor, went off to Ohio State, and when he finished his first quarter or his first semester there, he said that the physics class at Mentor was harder than the first physics class he took at Ohio State. So, I think we're doing the right thing. So, congratulations to these three students. Again, it's not much, maybe it'll cover a textbook or two, as we say. They'll learn where Domino's is on campus. Congratulations.
Do we have a legislative report this evening, Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Okay. Mr. Tuttle?
I'll attempt to keep it brief. Well, on Friday, June 30th, the governor signed the new two-year, $62 billion state budget for fiscal years 2014-2015 into law. The appropriation items become effective immediately, but the non-appropriation items will not become effective for 90 days unless otherwise indicated in the bill. Before signing the bill, he used his line item veto authority to veto 22 provisions from the appropriations measure. Four of the items were education-related. Unfortunately, the governor did not veto the two items the Ohio School Board Association had requested in addition to the others. The changes to the JVSD governance changes that they asked not to go as deep as what they did, they would like it to have been continued as elected positions instead of appointed by a committee. That's going to change to that. Also, the elimination of the 10% and 2.5% rollback replacement payments for property taxpayers on new and replacement levies. OSBA will continue their opposition to the JVSD governance changes and have already started discussions with members of the House on introducing legislation to repeal these provisions. The Conference Committee on House Bill 59 approved its final recommendations on the bill. As a result, a number of changes were made that affect school districts, including tax provisions that were not included in any previous versions of the bill. On June 20th, less than a week before, the Conference Committee acted on its budget recommendations, a broad tax reform package was announced, including the elimination of the 10% and 2.5% rollback replacement payments for property taxpayers on new and replacement levies. The elimination of the rollback payment is a major tax shift from the state to local property owners. Not all property taxpayers will benefit from the personal income tax reductions meant to offset the property tax increases. As a result, it is believed that this provision will make it more difficult for districts to pass levies. It's important to note. Some other things that changed in affecting education. The homestead exemption to become means-tested and will apply to new and replacement levies beginning November 2013. A small change, but still a change, payment in lieu of transportation increased to $250 per year, previously $233. It was proposed to become $800 per year, but it went down to $250. School safety levy is allowed. That was a point that we discussed in our last meeting, and a number of us felt that that was important, that it's going to be a demonstration that the community actually, by voting for a levy, should we put one on, that they support levy, safety initiatives. Here's a point that we had discussion on in the past, and homeschooled private and STEM school students to be eligible for extracurricular activities in their resident school district. So, what's interesting there is homeschooled and other students from STEM schools will have to have some way in which they have to qualify with their grades because we have those standards for our students to be eligible to participate. And that's it. I just kind of pulled some major bullets. The House Bill 59 is 1,300 pages, so the stack is not too big. I didn't have a copy, but trying to read it on a computer screen is pretty tough. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. Moving on, Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, to begin with, I'd like to just follow up with Tom's comments, and I've personalized the... the state budget impact to our district. And it's interesting, many of the lawmakers have been touting the new state budget as providing the largest increase in education funding in the last 10 years. And unfortunately, that does not apply to our school district. And I know that chart's a little hard to read up there, but the important parts are that in 2010-2011, the last year before the budget had just expired, we received $16,593,000 in state subsidies. This year just ended, the second year of the current state budget, that amount dropped to $15,475. And even with the new budget, as we understand it at this moment, our funding goes up to $15,948 and in the second year, $16,312, both numbers which are still less than what we received in 2010-2011. So I guess when we read in the media about the state budget and its impact, unfortunately, we're still perceived to be a wealthy district, less in need of state subsidies and state support, and we continue to see a decrease. This chart that you've seen in our budget and forecasting in the past has been updated to also show the new state budget. And if we go back to the last time we asked the community for new money in 2004, you'll see in that very first line, this coming year, we will receive $1.2 million less in state subsidies than we did in 2004. So not only are we getting less than we did three years ago, we're getting over a million less than we did 10 years ago. When we add other changes in tax policy and school funding policies, next year, we will receive $9 million less in annual revenue than we did in 2004. So unfortunately for our district, notwithstanding representations by the media, this budget, while it's a little bit more money than we originally expected, is certainly far less than what we received in the past. So I tried not to tear up too much as I presented that. I guess I should have been crying more. Now to something that's a little bit better news, and that's our, as you all know, June 30th is our fiscal year-end. And this year, I wanted to present just a couple of quick graphics before you approve the June financial statements. And the first is the revenue section. And again, I know it's a little hard to see, you have charts before you. Actual revenues this year were $217,000 above what we predicted in the May update to the forecast and a positive variance compared to the original budget of $4.6 million. And as we explained before, that's almost entirely the result of the collection of prior-year delinquencies, the collection of one-time money for old taxed Board of Appeal cases with two major companies in the area, and higher-than-expected current payments of property taxes. So on the revenue side, we received $4.6 million more. However, there's a bunch of red numbers up there. If we go back and look three years in the past, as we always do in the current year, three of the last four years, we actually received less money than we did in the year preceding. The one exception is 10/11, which is the first year after the repayment of the last of the old debt from our 2004 fiscal crisis, which allowed for that one-year increase. And when we look forward over the forecast period, you see a lot more red numbers, that we will continue to experience declining revenue year over year over year, which remains our primary challenge. And in fact, the predicted loss of revenue jumping from minus 2% to minus 5%, again reflects that 1.1 million of money we got from several-year-old Board of Tax Appeal settlements with Lincoln Electric and the Great Lakes Mall. On the expense side, again, good news, we've underspent the budget as we had predicted in May and has become a kind of a goal for us over the years. And most importantly, on this page, in recognition of what's happening to us at the state level with the lack of support in state funding, as well as a recognition of a very challenging economic climate we continue to live in, the bottom part, that's out some one-time loans, if you will, to our new CARES program that's now finished its second year of operation. But above the lines, what I want to call your attention to, for the fourth consecutive year, our year-over-year increase in spending has been less than 1%. Given the inflationary pressures unique to the public education world, our purchase of over $1 million a year in fuel for our transportation system, our food costs that continue to go up, healthcare expenses, this flattening of the expense curve was something the board set as a goal for us to achieve and something we've worked very hard at achieving based on our focus on our four major cost categories. And that's salaries, benefits, number of classrooms we operate, and special education expenses. So again, we are doing everything we can, but unfortunately, those are still black numbers. While the increase has been less than 1%, remember, revenues are going down by 2% or 5% each year, so it's not a real healthy dynamic for us. Again, kind of my grade card, separate from what ODE issues, is comparing what we expect to happen with what actually happens. Our trend continues to be fairly consistent. Quite frankly, I didn't have a good year. I had maybe a C year. You'll see my percent of accuracy is not our 10-year average or quite as good as last year, but fortunately, the numbers go in the right way. We collected more than we expected and we spent less than we expected. So there is some consistency to the conservative approach we take. The really good news is, is we focus on 2015-2016, we've been able to reduce that deficit because of the performance of the budget this year, down to $13,648,000. And through continued fiscal prudence and a focus on figuring out how to balance that, we're going in the right direction. And finally, every year, I say this is going to happen and because of our conservative approach, it hasn't. This year, for the first time in 10 years since 2003-2004, we spent more money than we took in. And what that means is the same thing it means in our household budget, we had to go into our savings account to pay our bills. That's not a good financial dynamic to have. And as you can see, as expenses are expected to continue to increase, even if we can flatten that red line and continue a 1% expense growth, that line goes straight out, but that green line, the revenue line, continues to decrease. And it means we're spending our one-time money to support our operations of the school district, and that's something we have to address. Unfortunately, leading up to our fiscal crisis 10 years ago, if you look backwards on the chart, you'll see four years where the red line was above the revenue line. And unfortunately, the district didn't really anticipate or plan for rebalancing structurally to have income equal or exceed expenses. That's not going to happen this time. The board's been very proactive and engaging in the community. The sad reality of school funding in Ohio is this is a standard dynamic in every school district, and this year is kind of the big signal to us, we've got to begin to talk about the future and how we're going to manage spending down our savings account. So I don't want to end on a totally bad note. We had a very good year. We're demonstrating a lot of fiscal prudence in what we're doing, but we still have a revenue problem that we can't, in the long term, offset simply by reducing our spending. So I wanted to provide those two contexts, both on the state budget discussions and our fiscal year-end. And unless there's questions, I would then ask that you approve the June 2013 financial statements.
Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
So recommend the Board of Education approve the investment transactions listed in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
So recommend the Board of Education approve the interfund transfers listed in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
So recommend the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
So recommend the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Mihawk?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
And I believe that concludes my items for this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there any unfinished business from the board? I don't believe so. Any new business? And the second hearing of the public? Anyone? Hearing none, we have no need for executive session. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
We've been having a good evening. Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.